Good evening all, welcome to Monday, January, February 3rd, Board Regular Meeting. Roll call please. Here.
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 And we're gonna do the the flag salute. Darian, can you do that for us? And before we sit down, we have a moment of silence if you can keep, remain standing. Thank you. If we can remain standing for a moment of silence for Mrs. Barbara Riel, Retired Administrator. I would like to hold the moment of silence who passed away, Mrs. Barbara Riel passed away on January 11th. She was employed as a Supervisor of Accounting from nineteen ninety-eighty-four to nineteen eighty-eight, and as a Director of Business Services from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-four. Mrs. Riel retired in nineteen ninety-four after ten years of service to Harupa Unified School District. The Board would like to express their condolences to the Riel family. Also, a moment of silence for Mr. Fred Lawrence, retired teacher, who passed away January fifteenth. Mr. Lawrence was employed as a science teacher at Harupa Middle, Harupa Middle School from nineteen seventy-five to two thousand and seven. Mr. Lawrence retired in two thousand and seven after thirty-two years of service to the students of Harupa Unified School District. And again, the Board would like to express their condolences to both families. Thank you, you may be seated. Trustee Regal, can you do our inspirational comment of the night?
Yes, President Ortega, thank you. You know, honestly, I can't recall if I've made, covered this. It's something of my style, but I always talk about it takes a village. And so it's gonna go a little sideways just due to the recent events that have occurred over the past couple of weeks. So I would just wanna start with, this evening's inspirational comments come from some recent events that had occurred over the, just a week ago. On January twenty-fifth, media headlines were filled with devastating news of a helicopter accident with the loss of an NBA legend, Kobe Bryant, his young daughter Gianna Bryant, and seven other passengers perished. This tragic news shook sports fans, households, our nation, and around the globe. During the somber time, many fans expressing shock, emotions, stories of these victims. There were also a sense of concern for their surviving families and a wave of emotion to show support. During this time, from all walks of life, came together wanting to help with offering many ways to be by the surviving family's side, or help mend the overwhelming sadness by sending encouraging messages. Just as the saying goes, it takes a village. If we reflect back to these moments, it will take your breath away and know that we are all compassionate human beings. Through what is viewed for heartache, there is a power of holding strength to uphold these. These are the times of weakness. Around the globe, the village came together to help. I can't express how moving this was, to see so many people come forward and be supportive. We can never guarantee what tomorrow brings, but we can always be part of the village to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any reports from closed session?
Yes, by a five-zero vote, the Board voted to approve a settlement agreement in special education dispute regarding OAH case number two zero one nine zero eight zero three nine eight, resolving all issues in the dispute.
Additionally, in a unanimous vote of five to zero with all trustees in favor and none opposed, the Board voted not to petition the California Supreme Court for review of case number D zero seven six two one three. Thank you.
Moving on, welcome two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty student board members, Mr. Duchon.
Well, good evening, students. Delighted to have you here, it's always a great part of our agenda. So let's start with Jasmine and Rubito. And then Darian, if you could follow with Harupa Valley High School. Thank you so much for being here.
Good afternoon, I hope you all had a great day. My name is Jasmine Leva and I am the Rubito High School Board Representative. On January thirty-first, we had our winter rally and our mid-winter dance. Our rally was a success. Okay, this is just a little side note, but we had like a little fight in our school, so well, a fight in our school, and we didn't know if we were gonna have our rally, so that's why it was like a kind of a big deal that we did have it. So we had a lot of hard work and time was put into this rally. Our black light dances are the most difficult because we have to get through everything from class signs, costumes, to decorations to glow. At our second rally, we had the class of nineteen seventy-four come to our school and see how much spirit we still had since they graduated. They rewarded us with a replica of their spirit stick. They won it all four years when they were in high school. Later that night, we had our winter dance where we got around two hundred fifty kids to attend. As this month starts, many of our winter sports are coming to an end. Boys' basketball has a difficult week coming for them. They are currently tied for fourth place right now in league, and in order to go to CIF, they have to be in fourth place. Our girls' basketball is fighting for first place in league tomorrow. They have a tough game, they hope to beat Moreno Valley so that they can place first in league. We hope that they use being home as an advantage as many students and parents and staff come to support. Upcoming events we have this week are Pride Day, February twelfth. Pride Day is where our eighth graders come from middle school to our school to get to know the campus and get information on programs that we have to offer. The following day, February thirteenth, on Thursday, we have the Best of Rubito is where our clubs and sports and classes set up stands to get new students to join or help make programs bigger and get more students involved. The various amounts of our students are also used, oh, to fundraise and get money towards their club. They sell tacos, aguas fricas, fruit, and it takes February twenty-fourth, we have lost coming to our school. That's all I have for you today, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Harupa Valley High School has just started a second semester and we've had lots of fun. Things happen already and more things set to happen in the future. On Wednesday, we had our Jag Rush. The first Wednesday, we came back to introduce the freshmen around campus. Cheer and band performed and ASB taught them the Jag spell out. After their little assembly, we had ASB give them a tour around campus, and once they were done with that, they had the opportunity to talk to clubs and sports on campus. The freshmen were very spirited, which helped the day go awesome. Our winter sports are doing absolutely exceptional. Boys' basketball is currently five to three in lead, in league, and have won both of their games last week against La Sierra and Patriot. At the La Sierra game, the boys scored eighty-one points and kept it there to honor Kobe Bryant. The boys will celebrate their senior night on Tuesday at six o'clock PM. And girls' basketball is currently four to four in league and had their senior night on Tuesday and beat La Sierra that night. And boys' soccer is currently second place and will have their senior night on Tuesday, tomorrow, at five PM. And girls' soccer is also in first place and will have their senior night on Thursday at five PM. And girls' water polo is also in first place and will have their senior night on Thursday at three fifteen. Some updates about theater is production is starting for the spring musical Catch Me If You Can. Audition packets were available at the choir room door for about two weeks, and the auditions were on January twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth. More info about this musical will be coming soon. And we have our spring talent show coming up on Friday, February seventh, at five PM, which will be on the tile side of our gym. The auditions are tomorrow after school and is open to all students. The tickets are two dollars and the top three winners get a prize. And we are having a Valentine's DTR dance on February twenty-first. At this dance, we are encouraging single students to wear white, taking people to wear red and pink if it's complicated. Different clubs on campus will be selling nachos, water, candy, soda, and more. This dance will be from six PM to nine PM on Friday, February twenty-first. Some other fun Valentine's Day things going on at Valley is freshman class council is selling Valentine grams at lunch starting February sixth to February thirteenth at lunch. Choir started selling their singing vallograms today at lunch with, along with the candy rose. When someone buys a singing velogram, they are able to choose from various songs such as Stand By Me, Count On Me, I'll Be There For You, and Unchained Melody. Jag Migos is selling friendship and Valentine's to students and staff all this week and next week also. Thank you.
And thank you both.
And item two, recognition, recognize Harupa twenty twenty Science and Engineering Fair winners. Mr. Dubrasky.
Thank you. On January twenty-second, elementary and secondary students entered their science fair projects in the Harupa District's thirty-fourth Annual Science and Engineering Fair. These students' projects were selected from hundreds of entrants in local fairs at various schools in the district during December and January. Judging took place January twenty-second and awards were presented on the twenty-third. Judges for the district competition included staff, board members, and community volunteers. Mrs. Joelle Prate, a Patriot High School teacher, served as coordinator of the event. Twenty-four students from the intermediate, junior, and senior divisions will be entered in the Riverside County Science and Engineering Fair to be held at the Riverside Convention Center on March second. And a list of winners and their divisions are included in your backup materials. We want to offer all of our entrants and all of our winners our hearty congratulations.
Congratulations to all the winners. Item two B, recognize Mission Bell Elementary Schools Community Mentorship Program. Mr. Dubrasky.
Thank you. If we could have our Mission Bell staff administration and their partners from the DA and Public Defender's Office to please stand so we can say nice things about you. The Community Mentors Partnership Program at Mission Bell Elementary School, stay standing, come on. Began during the two thousand and fifteen sixteen school year in partnership with the Riverside County District Attorney's Office and the Riverside Public Defender's Office. Mission Bell Elementary Teachers, Ms. Ramona Sanchez, who is here tonight, and Ms. Linda Goodheart, along with Mr. Mike Carney of the DA's office, were instrumental in establishing this program. They collaborate and offer a fifth and sixth grade student mentor program that serves at-promised students by providing positive messages, sharing of personal experiences, encouraging academic progress, and important social skills needed for success. We would like to recognize Mission Bell Elementary School staff and staff from the Riverside County District Attorney's Office and Public Defender's Office for their wonderful work in providing support for our students through mentorship. Like you said, Trustee Regal, it takes a village to have students' success, so congratulations to Mission Bell.
On behalf of the Board, congratulations, Mission Bell, thank you for all your, your hard work, thank you. And item two C, recognize trustee Karen Bradford. Mr. Duchon.
Thank you, President Ortega. So, last year, you may recall, you, well, actually, not talking to you quite yet, I'll congratulate you in a second. But you were elected by the rest of this Board to serve as part of the election for people to serve on the Riverside County Committee on School District Organization. Well, no sooner were you a delegate than you became a member and were elected to the Riverside County Superintendent, Riverside County Committee on School District Organization, of which there are eleven members. And you represent supervisory, these are long words, district two. And that committee makes decisions regarding territory transfers, unifications, and the such. Sometimes they have a lot of work and sometimes it's very controversial. But we want to recognize you for your service on that committee. This may be, maybe the first time somebody got elected immediately after they were appointed to the electoral body. So congratulations, trustee Bradford, and we know you will serve not only this district, but now the county very well in your office. You're welcome, you're welcome. Thank you, wait till you have to do the work. They do feed you. Okay.
Thank you so much, we're so proud of you, trustee. Thank you. And we'll move on to Board comments, we'll start with trustee Regal.
Thank you. I don't have much coverage at this time, and I just wanna highlight the science fair winners. That's, that's a family affair. I mean, I just had two that graduated within the last two years, and I can't tell you how many nights we spent as a family building something or preparing something for science fairs, so you know, I wanna thank all the teachers that really invested time and kept kids motivated and encouraging the parents to, you know, put something together, so thank you all, and thank you to the, the student winners that were gonna go on, or that attended the fair, and then also will be going on to the district level, or the county, county level, right? County level, excuse me. And Ramona, thank you for really spearheading this program with the DA and the students, but I really wanna thank you for your time 'cause I know it's something that you've been passionate about, and thanks for coming tonight and, and really continue your efforts, it's really, it's greatly appreciated, the kids are only gonna benefit from it. And trustee Bradford, congratulations to you. Yeah, you just walk in and look what you, and you just shake things up, that's, that's what I love about you. That's all I have tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Onto trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple things, and I sent the Board an email earlier this week. The Riverside Latino Network has a new president, her name is Arceli Ruiz, yeah. And anyway, so she's, she's gonna invite us to those meetings, and I guess we have a standing item on their, on their agenda every two weeks, so so I'd encourage the Board to, to look at, maybe we can rotate, or try to get a chance to get out there and be a part of that group. Second, this Friday, this Saturday, Sam Knight, former trustee in this Board, has invited us to the Black History Parade, which happens every year, and has invited us to ride on the trolley with other folks from, from the surrounding area. So I hope you can make that. Congratulations to all the students, Jasmine, I know you're still here, and Darian slept, but good luck, please wish all your teammates, the volleyball, the girls' volleyball, the best of luck, and thanks for, for all your updates tonight. And finally, one, second to last, Ms. Sanchez and Ms. Lawrence and, and Ms. Goodheart, no, she's not here, but I had an opportunity to meet some of these mentors at the By Literacy Awards, and I know it's a very good program, and I appreciate all your efforts on that. And finally, congratulations, Ms. Bradford, on your election, so we look forward to you doing great things. And last thing, one more thing. This, this Wednesday, February fifth, Rubito High School is having a, I don't remember what they call it, it's a military, February fifth. Military interviews, so veterans come out, they've invited the veterans to come out, this is the second year they've done it. Last year, we had forty veterans, and they sit in front of a panel of maybe four or five students, usually juniors, and they ask the veterans about their experiences, so it's a really great event. We had the opportunity to be there last year, so any veterans out there, you still have time to come out, so that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to trustee Linda.
Okay, I wanna thank Mrs. Regal for your nice inspiration. I know a lot of people have had comments about Kobe Bryant. It's nice to, it's sad to see something like that happen, but it's nice to see that how people, what brings people together and how they really feel. Some people are, have a difficult time expressing how they feel about people and, or about things that happen around their area, so when this, things like that happen, it starts to bring people around together and they start talking, so hopefully, that will resound back into our area and get people to talk about things that are going on in our area and what they wanna help with or what they wanna recognize. I send my sympathies out to the families of Mrs. Riel and Mr. Lawrence. I didn't know Mr. Lawrence, I did know Mrs. Riel just very shortly when I first came into the district, and she was a very, very nice lady. And kept the payroll going and kept the business was running in our district, and so sad to see her be gone now. And to our board members, thank you, student board members, thank you for coming and sharing the thoughts that you have for Rubito and what's going on. One thing I did wanna mention, Darian left before I could say anything, or Darian left before I could say anything. I went to the mayor's reception for Harupa Unified, Harupa Valley, and Darian was there, and I said, oh, you, it's nice to see you come out and represent the high school. He says, well, he's my cousin. So it doesn't fall far from the tree. And as I started talking to a few people and a few more people came in, I found that our mayor has a lot of cousins in the area, and I knew a lot of them from elementary school when they were at Ina Arbuckle and some of them in the community, so, and they remembered me too, so it was nice to, for us all to get together at a time where we can celebrate someone who has come up through our schools and is now our mayor of our city, which not everybody can say that, you know, that the mayor has been here all his life and come up and, and become pillar of the community, so we look forward to having our mayor stop by once in a while, and it's, you should stop by the council meetings once in a while and see what's going on, it's interesting what all they talk about there. And then I wanna congratulate our winners of our science awards, our science fair, and wish them all some luck at the county science fair, I hope they do really well. And Mrs. Bradford, I do want to congratulate you. She has a very broad knowledge of a lot of experiences in life in the Harupa Valley community and what we need out here, and she's going to be a great voice for us to send back representing our area and offer suggestions and recommend programs and things like that to the county that may help us out here, so we look forward to hearing more from you when you go to the meetings. And that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Bradford.
First, Jasmine, I'd like to, Sam, I'm always happy to see you and the other student leaders here, and I'm very proud of you for coming, so thank you. Stick with us. And, and don't be shy about when you need help, you know, I always tell students, there's what I call magic student status, that everybody wants to help students, so take advantage of it because we want to see you do well in life and, and feel that we're helping to pay it forward in, in your brain and your heart, so thank you. To tell you a little bit more, a little tiny bit about the county organization on district, county commission on school district organization, what, what's going to be, there's not anything affecting us right now, what the big issue is, is Beaumont banning school districts are perhaps going to be swapping boundaries, so this will mean a lot of money is involved between the two districts and whether or not they feel, the residents of one area feel that they belong in that district or the other district. So it's going to be involving public meetings, but it doesn't affect us. Let's see, and the only other reportable thing I have is I visited Harupa Middle School with Mr. Dubrasky. It was a lot of fun to go back there because our kids went there, and my husband, back corner, was PTA president and was there so often, people thought he was a substitute teacher. So, to me, it's a lot of fun to see how our district grows its students and to stay in touch by visiting the individual campuses as I toured the various sites. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, like my colleagues have mentioned already, wanna congratulate you again, trustee Bradford, for all the hard work that, that you continue to do and learn and, and share, share the knowledge with us as well, so we thank you. And also thanks to the students, to the Board students, I think every time that I see you and that you're sharing what is going on in the schools, I think you're, you're doing more than just informing us, you're really keeping us to date and and that accountability part two of, of, you know, making the best that we can of our time to visit your schools as well, so thank you so much, Jasmine. And again, thank you for Mission Bell, one of the, one of the first schools that I, that I visited when I got elected was Mission Bell, and you guys just opened, like with open arms, and it speaks volumes of teachers that are so involved, like you, Mrs. Ramona, and a principal who actually also is, when I, when I went, you guys were grilling for, for the, the students' perfect attendance, and it speaks volumes for a principal to be on the grill and, and, you know, taking that time for your students and for your, it's amazing, I'm very honored and, and privileged to, to serve with you all and, and in making sure that our students get the best, so thank you so much. And some of the events that I've attended this month, this month since, since last time have been, actually, I went up to, to, to the Bay Area, Bill Gates and his wife have a foundation, so we got invited to, to share our, our experience too with, with some, it's a decision lab, it's called, it's a research, they're doing research on how curriculum is, is embedded in schools and how they're seeing how behavior, how they can implement behavioral changes or behavioral sciences into the curriculum itself. So I thought that was really interesting, and being funded by, by Bill Gates, I think that was really interesting, and to see schools, I think there was a school from Moreno Valley. In our area, I think there was two, San Bernardino and Moreno Valley and myself, so that was really interesting to see the future in, in advance and making sure that component of behavioral sciences is also, is also in there. And then, this weekend, we attended Presidential Workshop, thank you to Ms. Paula Ford who came with me. You think you learned everything and you think you know, you know, you know what the ins and outs of our things, but once you really attend conferences and you're, you're embedded into, into, to the, to the information that you probably think you know, or just surrounded by individuals who are also learning, the process, I think was really nice, and we raised questions, and there was also other Board Presidents from, from the entire state of California too, so you learn from small, I think there was a district with only like seven thousand students, and then we're like triple, and you get to see different perspectives too, so I'm very honored to, to have been part of that training as well this weekend. And we'll leave the, the rest for, for later. We'll move on to public comments, and we have Card Sylvia Oggin.
I've gotten calls from some sites to the darkness at their sites, many teachers stay well past the time they put. And when they come out, it is dark. But yet, I pass by Pedley, and I don't know what they call it, I think it was an old warehouse. Those lights are so bright, they could blind you. Now, if you can have lights like that there, why can't you have the same amount of lights at sites that are so dark, two that come to mind are Van Buren and West Riverside. It is ridiculous that a teacher should have to leave after putting a long day in, plus, and walk out where they don't know about their safety, they don't know if they're gonna get to their car safe or not. Also, you might have seen this program on TV called Undercover Boss, where many bosses from corporations go undercover and they work hand in hand with their employees, and they discover things that they didn't know, being at the top, they don't really know what happens at the bottom. And without doubt, every one of those bosses come out just amazed by what they saw, amazed by the work that their employees give to them. And many of them are so heartfelt by their experience that they make many, many of their employees' lives change tremendously, where they have bought homes, they have bought cars, they have given money for medical. So much of a difference in lives of ordinary people that didn't expect it, but were just so overwhelmed by it. Now, we have Elliot. And many people know that I have no respect for the man. And many people know that I have no respect for the man, but I truly, truly hope Elliot that classified and certificate race or their lack of was worth you building your new house because you're going to sit pretty while other people are struggling to make ends
Thank you. And we have, sorry, Colin Markovich. With Assembly, Assembly Member Sabrina Cervantes.
Good evening, board members. It's nice to see you all. I just wanted to formally introduce myself. My name is Colin Markovich. I am the scheduler and field representative for Harupa Valley. For Assembly Member Sabrina Cervantes, I just wanted to formally introduce myself to all of you here and let folks that I'll know that I'll be working in the area. I am also, also a proud alum of JUSD schools. I am a proud Dolphin Panther Warrior. And it's no excuse, it's no small stretch to say that the teachers of Harupa Valley, of JUSD helped me, guided me to the path where I'm on today. Mentioned Mr. Lawrence, who was at Harupa Middle School at the same time that I was. And while I never had him as a teacher, he always made time to speak to me during passing parade and that was something that I truly appreciated. And so hearing that he, hearing that hit home for me. So I just wanted to give the board some updates about the assembly member, what the assembly member has been doing in the community. We have issued our 2019 legislative update, has some information about the accomplishments that the assembly member has done over the past year. I will leave that in the back for you to peruse at your leisure. Also wanted to thank JUSD for partnering with us and Senator Roth's office on our upcoming Census Education and Recruitment Fair. JUSD has graciously agreed to provide the Parents, Parent Learning Center for this space. And so we're very looking forward to this event on February 8th. It's a Saturday. I don't have to tell the folks here how important it is to make sure that there is an accurate count of the people living in Harupa Valley because that determines how much money our locality receives from the state and from the federal government. I don't have to tell the folks here how important that is that we receive our fair share of funding, which is why this event is so important, why we're so grateful to have been able to partner with JUSD on this. And also wanted to highlight that we had held last week a Cash for College Workshop at Harupa Valley High School. We will be holding another one this week at Rubito High School. It's a process that helps students walk through the application process for college to apply for financial aid. And we're looking forward to being able to help students with that process. So thank you so much for your time. Look forward to seeing you around the community. It was a pleasure talking to you tonight.
Thank you, Colin. And please, on behalf of the board, congratulate Sabrina for her new babies and her family. Thank you. And next, we have Jasmine Navarrete and Tanisha French.
Hello, board members. Thank you so much for having us. We are here to represent the Chicano Latino Caucus Riverside County. And what we are proposing is to register and preregister our high school students to vote. So I am Jasmine Navarrete. This is Tanisha French. So we represent the office of Sandy Pina, who is a California delegate for the 42nd District Vice Chair, Region Nine of the Chicano Latino Caucus. We opened the first electoral campaign office for the California Caucus in the entire county of Riverside County. I'm sorry, in the entire county of Riverside. We are a nonpartisan organization focused on increasing voter turnout and engagement throughout the region by utilizing education to improve voter engagement, voter registration outreach events, assist high school students to register or preregister to vote. So what we are asking for is to assist our local school districts in complying with the goals of California as outlined in the official proclamation issued by Alex Vidia to register and preregister our county's high school students to vote. And the California Secretary of State, Alex Vidia, implemented a program encouraging high school students to register to vote and preregister 16 and 17-year-olds so young people can easily and effectively participate in the political process.
Hi, good evening. Our goals with doing this program are to coordinate with our high school principals, to work with the ASB and leadership students and their advisors to promote an on-campus voter registration workshop. So what we're going to do is conduct on-campus voter registration training for the students and on how to properly complete a California voter registration application for Riverside County. There are 10 components that a lot of times can be confusing that are important for a California voter registration application that have to be completed in its entirety. And so we want to help the students by creating an emphasis on each of the components of the application and empowering those students to be able to register their peers. For example, we want to make sure that their signatures are correct and that each component of the registration form is ready for them when they vote, so that they can vote timely. And the reason why we want to do this is because we want to engage the students in the political process early. One of the things that we found out is young people involved in their first election increases their chance of lifelong participation in the process, in the political process. It also provides a sense of civic responsibility for them, as well as helps them take pride in their community and the issues that are important to them. Young people play a critical role in our democracy. And in 2014, only 52% of young voters registered and only 8% actually showed up to vote for their first election. And so we want to help increase their activity as far as that within the school setting. I provided Superintendent Duchon with some extra publications. We have our contact information. Thank you very much.
Madam President, if I could just ask maybe Mr. Duchon, I don't know, I know there's some efforts we've been working on with CCAEJ. And we also passed a census resolution last year. So I don't know if there's maybe some work that's overlapping here.
Yeah, I was going to pass your information on to each of our high school principals and tell them to coordinate with their ASBs and groups to see what we can do in terms of registration. And I know we've had some on-campus efforts before and I think it's great. I think it's the most sacred value in our society is the right we have to vote. So thank you for your work and we will, so we will coordinate with our principals and try to work with you on the timelines.
We would sincerely appreciate that. Thank you so very much. Thank you for your time.
And that concludes our public comments. If there's any other, that's, oh, sorry, no, there's one more, sorry. Wendy Echols. She's kidding.
Last, last one. We're making up the last one.
That's not what it was. The last time I didn't turn in a card, this time I did. I'm going to make it quick. Good evening, everyone. Super awesome presentation on the voter registration. I turned 18 on Election Day, 1992. Figure out how old I am that way. And the first thing I did as an 18-year-old in this country was voted. And my birthday's on Election Day this year and, you know, I will be out there. I will actually vote early. My ballot should be in the mail. I should be getting that any day now and then, so very, very glad to hear that there's an effort out there. I did want to take the time to say thank you because I have been nagging for months to bring forth the resolution for the Schools and Communities First Resolution. So I want to say thank you for having that on the agenda and I certainly hope it passes unanimously at the end of the meeting today. And also thank you very much for putting the Dolores Huerta Resolution on there. It's really important that we honor civil rights icons and it's really important that we honor Dolores Huerta. And I will provide some information along with resources that will be available through her foundation that hopefully jointly we can share out with the members of our community. Additionally, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Duchon, Mr. Brooks for helping push forward that Wellness Committee. Although we haven't had a meeting yet, I'm so very, very, very excited to see where that's going to go. In fact, I probably got a little bit ahead of myself as per usual. I do have a tendency to dive in before I test the waters and have reached out to some people who have resources that might be available to help us. Also, in the B-cell Committee today, we met for the first time this year and Mr. Dubrovsky, Mr. Brooks and Mr. Owens were patient with me with all of my requests and demands. So hopefully we can continue to move forward in a positive direction on that. I did want to give a shout out to Ms. Ramona Sanchez and the mentor program. She brought that to our attention in the association about two years ago and actually Miraloma did take advantage of it as well. And so I was fortunate enough to be working with one of the mentors and we did mock trial at Miraloma Middle School. And we also did some, brought some mentors into one of our At-Risk classes. And so we were able to take students over to the Riverside Courthouse and do a whole bunch of really neat things with that. And so I want to thank Ramona for bringing that program to my attention and hopefully association, we can continue to build that. Additionally, I want to give a shout out to my friend Dan Oggin over there, who hosted me in his superstar superhero classroom the other day. Not being in the classroom, sometimes you, even if it's only been a few months, you forget just how special it is to be in there. And I haven't been in a fourth grade classroom in 17 years. So being there with fourth graders was a lot of fun for me. Lastly, thank you to Ms. Regal and Ms. Ortega for responding to our invitation to come to the Rep Council meetings. I hope that Mrs. Chard, Mr. Garcia, and I know Mrs. Bradford, you've already been to one, that you were able to come out and come to one of our meetings because I know that's really important and our members like to hear from you. So with that, if you have not signed the petition yet for Schools and Communities First, I do have them available. I won't, I'll wait till after the meeting, but we would love to have signatures so we can get this forward on the November ballot. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wendy Echols. And my apologies again for not skipping you, but it was hiding in here. Thank you, thank you. We'll move forward to, or if we can refresh our screens.
Is it possible people will call us on the phone?
If you can state your name.
Hi, I'm Sasha Parker. I'm a senior at JVHS. I'll try and make this quick as possible. Sorry, I look like a messenger.
Can I have you talking to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Yes. Hi, my name's Sasha Parker again. I'm here to discuss a concern I have. Recently, one of my friends just announced that she's planning to leave my school, which is JVHS, after the sports season is done, which is water polo. The parent decided JUSD is not a healthy place for her kids and took the younger sibling out last semester. The principal made an unnecessary comment to the parent of my friend saying, "Oh, you're finally getting out of JVHS." To which the parent corrected the principal stating that her other child was still a student there. Not sure what kind of person does that, especially it sets a poor example for Jag Kind. I suggest checkups with not only admin, but your teachers should be heard, especially since they are the ones doing all the work to make the admin look good to try and keep the kids learning without limits. That's all I ask. Thank you.
And we have next report on California Dashboard Differential Assistance, Mr. Dubrovsky.
Thank you. As you're aware, the dashboard is California's accountability system. It replaced the old API and is a much more comprehensive measure of all the things that have to do with student achievement in school districts and schools and districts. And when we talk about what is the dashboard, it consists of 11 indicators or measures, or measured in 11 different ways. Six of them are data that is gathered and put out by the state and five of them are the local measures. And those are the measures that we report ourselves and we talked about that a couple of board meetings ago, the local measures. So in December, the state measures were released and so I want to talk a little bit about those. And those measures are academic performance, high school graduation rate, suspension rate, chronic absenteeism, college and career readiness, and English learner progress. So those are the six things that are measured by the state, considered state measures. The other local measures that we talked about before, our school climate, implementation of standards, basic services, parent engagement, and access to abroad course of study. And those are things that the district reports and we'll talk about those again in June when we bring forward the LCAP. Go ahead and go. And to get to the dashboard is, I put a little link on there, but it's really easy to go. It's just the state's website, cde.ca.gov. And it will take you, you put in, the dashboard link is right there on the main page. And when you put in Harupa Unified, you get what's on the screen now. That's a live dashboard representation from the web. And it has those different colors that represent the six different items, with the exception of English learner progress. And if you look, you can see that that doesn't have a performance color this year and that's because they just recently determined what would make up those measuring sticks or yardsticks for that. So we have this year data. And then next year, when they have both status, which is where we're at, and change, which is where we moved from last year, that's when we'll get a color. Because as you'll recall, the colors are a function of both where you're at and where you moved from last year. And those two things together generate the color for each of those different items. Go ahead, go back to the PowerPoint. Okay, so in that, I'm going to take you through some of those colors in just a minute, but I'll sum some of it up for you. There are some celebrations and some opportunities to improve. One of our celebrations is students with disabilities and I'll share the specifics of that. There's overall an increase in academic performance and that our EL foster and white student groups all increased and those things are all something that we're very proud of. Additionally, there are opportunities, things that we want to improve. One is chronic absenteeism. And that is something that we'll be working with. Suspension rates, our college and career readiness index, which we'll have to talk a little bit about. And then the achievement of our foster homeless and African-American student groups are all areas that we are going to focus on making improvements because we don't feel like those are at the level we need them to be. So this is, you saw those different dashboard gauges. So this is kind of everything in a nutshell and that's your first page. And make sure you're looking at the 2019 version, which is the first slide. And I'm going to kind of toggle back and forth between last year and this year. Last year's the next page on your, in your sheets. But for example, let's look at students with disabilities. Wow, I can hardly see that from here. Okay. So I'm going to have to use my paper. Students with disabilities are midway down on your left and going towards the right. It shows all of the different colors for the different rates, like chronic absenteeism and then suspension, graduation rate. So if you were to look at your next page, 2018, and look at the achievement of our students with disabilities last year, you'll see that chronic absenteeism was an orange and then everything else was a red. And that's in looking at that second page of 2018 results. So that was a real need for improvement and we had a lot of people working really hard to help our students improve their outcomes. So if we were to go now back to the prior page, which is this year's results, you can see that chronic absenteeism still remains orange, but all of the other groups have improved. There are no longer any red colored achievement gains in those. So we made great gains in all of those areas that we're really excited about the achievement of our students with disabilities. Now if you look at areas for growth, if you look, the first column going up and down is chronic absenteeism. And you can see that that is an area that we really want to work on and that's our students that have less than 90% attendance. So we need our students to be here every day or they're not going to achieve and get the gains that we need them to make so that they can have the future that we want them to have. And so that is an area that we're focused on taking a look at and trying to make some inroads with. Additionally, you can look and see our suspension rate. There are three areas that are red. So that's another area that we plan to really do some work on to determine, you know, how we can make that better. Another area that I want to talk briefly about is college and career readiness because as you can see, under the all students group, which is that top group going across to the right, we scored an orange. And that was actually down a color from last year, which last year it was yellow. And we were really surprised. And we were really surprised by that, because as we measured all the different pieces of that puzzle, they were all going up. So like, I was super confident that we were going to have a better color than yellow, not a worse color than yellow. And if you turn past these two slides to where it says college and career index, I'll kind of explain what happened, because we dug deep into the data and figured out. There's a whole bunch of ways that a student can be considered college and career ready by the state. One of them is getting a three or better in both language arts and math at the end of 11th grade when they take the CASP. One of them is scoring a three or better on two AP advanced placement exams. One of them is getting a C or higher in two semesters of a dual enrollment, i.e. a college course during their high school experience. Or, and this is the part where it gets super complicated, they can do a combination of things, like state seal of biliteracy along with a CASP score of three or higher in English, or two years of a military science course along with a CASP score of three in English and a score of two or higher in the other one. Or they can complete a CTE pathway and get a CASP score of three in English or math and a score of two in English or better, or complete a pathway and get one a semester of dual enrollment with a grade of C or higher. Or they could complete A through G and get a CASP of three and a two in the other subject. Or they could do A through G and get a dual enrollment course semester, or they could get a score of three or higher in one AP exam, or they could complete a CTE pathway. So as you can see, there's like a ton of different combination of factors that can lead to being college and career ready on this particular index. As we were looking at it, we looked at A through G and it went up. We looked at dual enrollment and it went up. We looked at CTE pathway completion and it went up. We looked at like almost every single measure. The only measure that didn't specifically go up was the three or higher on the AP exams, and it stayed the same. It didn't go down. But for some reason, when we got down to the actual data, the number of students that did both things went down, even though at the same time, the number of students that were doing each of those individual things, every category went up. So it was weird. But in the end, our thinking collectively in education services is like this, the numbers that we saw in improvement is good for kids. Now, the fact that they didn't get the particular two or more's that the state has designated as college and career readiness, that's unfortunate, but we saw increases in all those areas, and we feel like those increases are going to continue and are going to take care of those dual measures. So we feel pretty confident that we're happy about the results that we got, even though it didn't translate into the color that we wanted to get. So that's just by way of a little explanation of college and career readiness. That didn't look good, but actually was good. And go ahead.
I have a question. In this, when you say that they need a score of three...
Uh huh.
Is that the state that is scoring those scores, or are tests that we're giving our students, or I mean, in, they're preparing for the tests?
Yeah, the CASP is the state, or the Smarter Balance Test taken by several states, and they score that, and it's a four-point rubric. And then the AP is a test that the College Board gives, and they score that. So it's not any of our tests, they're outside tests.
Okay, because I was wondering if that's, who, in other words, if a student is scoring really well, and then all of a sudden, the score drops, where are we going to put the blame?
Well, it wasn't that any individual score dropped. It was that students didn't complete both measures together. So for example, we had more students that scored three or higher on the CASP, but they didn't necessarily complete A through G, or they didn't necessarily complete a CTE pathway, in order to have the combination of both things to then score college and career ready on the state index.
Okay, so when a student signs up for these things, you know, and we want them to pass that, they know in advance, they've got to complete these two or three items.
Yeah, no, they don't necessarily know that to show up on our dashboard as college and career ready, they need to do these combinations of things. That's not something that students are generally aware of. That's just state accountability, because really, whether a student is college and career ready is somewhat of a subjective thing, and that's the way the state has defined it. For a long time in the past, it was just A through G. Like if you complete these courses with a C or better, you are eligible to attend a four-year college at the UC or CSU system. Now the state, and the research says that for students to be successful and persistent and get a degree in four years, they need a little more than that. So the state has determined like, these are the more-than-that things that they ought to have. But we don't necessarily counsel students to try and get those two things, because that's more like playing the accountability game, where we just, we want them to be successful.
Would that be something that we could look at to improve our scores, is to say, you know, like how the old, if you were going to be a college prep student, these are the classes, these are how many credits you had to have to be a college prep student? Okay, so we're doing the same thing with our pathways, you've got to complete this, this, this. Are we putting that out to the students, that you really should complete both of these if you want to? I mean, I know that that's scoring for us, but still, it would help them maybe...
We don't specifically show them the matrix and say, you should do two of these things. What we do is, for example, one possible, A through G completion plus an AP test score of three or above. We counsel students that are A through G bound, that are trying to, you know, be prepared for college, to take an AP course and to take the test and to pass the test. We incentivize that by paying their exam fee so that they can take the test for free. We make sure that they know that if they get that three or four, then they get college credit for that test, and that saves them money in the long run and is better for them. But we've not tried to say like, this matrix is what you ought to aspire to. Because I think it's kind of arbitrary and...
But the state is telling us that that's what they want us to do.
That's how we get credit from the state, yeah.
Yeah, that's how we get credit. So wouldn't it be advantageous for us to put that into play in our...
You know, let me give you an example of where it may not mean anything to a student. So on the box where it says CASP score of three in English or math and a score of two in English or math, that CASP score has absolutely nothing to do with the student's future. Nobody looks at it. It's actually, it's a, what's the word, confidential score. And unless some college all of a sudden asks for it. So our guidance coordinators, our counselors are really working with students with things like their grade point average, their A through G requirements, their preparation for SATs. And so I think the fair answer, first of all, is this is relatively new, to combine the two things. And we're very careful to not, I want to say this, not to do things necessarily to please the state, but to take care of our students to the best. So rather than encourage, I mean, we want students to do their best on CASP scores, but they're taking it 11th grade, right?
Yeah, they take it in 11th grade.
So in 11th grade, a lot of them are taking the PSAT, the SAT, they're taking, it's a very heavy year. I mean, we're trying to get the student through high school with their highest GPA and test scores. So we're always going to default to what's best for the student, not necessarily what looks best on our dashboard. We hope it shows up on the dashboard, but I think the fact that our graduation rates have gone up, that our A through, A through G has been a tough nut for us to crack, to get students into that. And it's really critical in terms of college admissions and automatics. So it's a new focus for us, but we're still going to, our counselors are still going to advise the students what works best for them, and hopefully our dashboard improves.
And I would also add that Mr. Deshaun and I were just having this conversation today, and the research shows like, the single best predictor of college success is high school grades. And that's not found anywhere in the state's, you know, matrix or dashboard, because that's a subjective thing that they can't, you know, sort of, it's not an objective data that is in a repository that they have somewhere to report. So, you know, there's, I could debate, you know, how the efficacy of some of those measures. As more of our students do all of those things, it's going to take care of itself, because more of them are going to do, you know, multiple things. More students are going to score higher academically, and our scores are going up academically. I think it'll take care of itself, even without doing something for the sake of the state's dashboard.
Okay. Well, then why is this dashboard so important? Is it just for us to understand where we are lacking in teachers? And I don't mean teachers, I mean like enough teachers teaching this, or...
The state changed its accountability system. As you know, we had API, and that was the one number, and it was, are you good, are you bad? There's your number. And the state really wanted to provide something that was more instructive for districts, for the public, to really be able to see all the different pieces that go into success. And so this is one element, how many of our students are college and career ready. Taken in context with all the 10 other elements, it provides a way of looking at the district and at individual schools, and it gives us data to look at. Like we, like I said, we were pretty confident that number was going to be going up, and when it didn't go up, we really had to sit down and take a deep dive into the data to figure out what was going on. And when we were done looking at it, we felt pretty confident that things were in a good direction, so.
Madam President, I've got a question real quick.
I think he has one more slide. Do you have one more?
Do you want to ask now, or do you want me to finish the next slide?
Yeah, if I could.
Okay.
Just on this topic, so my understanding is the LCAP was recorded, reported college and career reading as tests taken at 11th grade. It also provides the district an opportunity to work with students, depending on where they're at, for college career readiness. Do you get where I'm asking?
I do, specific to math and language arts. Like, for example, math, if they score a three, they're considered conditionally ready for math. If they score a four, they don't have to take a math placement test at like CSU or UC, because they're considered college-ready. They can begin to take college credit-earning courses in math without even taking the placement test. So if they're a three, then we can schedule students into another math class that's been approved by CSU, UC to fill that gap. And then if they're successful, they're senior in that math class, then they're ready to go for college-earning math. So there are certain things, benefits to us in what we can do with the data after that test comes back at the end of 11th grade, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Dubrowski.
That's what I was getting at.
So the last thing I want to talk about is differentiated assistance, and that is another piece of the state's accountability dashboard. And so any, every year, whenever a particular student group has two or more Reds, then we qualify for differentiated assistance. And what that means is that we work with the county to do some root cause analysis to see why is that particular student group struggling, and what can we do to improve those outcomes for students? And if we go back to the 2019 student group report there, you can see that our homeless students had Reds in chronic absenteeism and suspension rate. And so that's an area that we qualify for differentiated assistance. Our African-American students had Reds in the same two areas, and then our foster youth had Reds in suspension rate and mathematics. So those are the three areas that we qualify for differentiated assistance this year. So, you know, you can already tell in looking at vertically, chronic absenteeism and suspension rate as a whole is going to be an area of focus for us. And in, I'm happy to report, I was just talking with Monte Owens today, that our first semester check-in with the data in looking at suspension rates, we've seen about a 20% decline in suspensions from last year. So we've put several things in place over the last year to try and improve those numbers and outcomes for kids with behavior. And so we feel like at least at the halfway point at the semester, we're seeing some success there. So we plan on really taking a deep look at chronic absenteeism and suspension rate, and then in particular, looking at what we have in place for our foster homeless and African-American students to ensure that those numbers improve for next year. So that's, the differentiated assistance is envisioned by the state and by the county as a way to provide some technical assistance to districts, to really look at the processes and systems they have in place, to put more things in place to improve those outcomes. And as you take a look at our LCAP in June, when we bring it to you, you will see additionally that there are things in place that we have, that we've put in place to try and improve outcomes for those students as well.
I want to go back to your question, trustee Chard, too, on why is this important? And I have to go back a couple of years. I think you all recall the APIs and the AYPs, and we all complained about having one number that identified a school as good, bad, or whatever. Well, the federal government, when they changed from ESEA, or No Child Left Behind, to ESSA, required every state to develop a plan for accountability. Part of that plan was there had to be multiple measures of each, and each student group had to be measured. So we went from a single number to a very complex matrix. So what you have is kind of a bureaucratic overlay to look at accountability, which doesn't necessarily tell you about individual students, but it tells you about groups of students. And I think from the standpoint of looking at groups of students, and what kinds of, you know, we talk about like a system of supports for students and for schools, to look at what's needed to change those factors for each student. And I've said it before, we will always look at test scores, for example, as a factor, but we're never going to evaluate a student, nor really grade or motivate a student just on their test scores. We're going to look at other things. So it's a tool. It's a tool in the toolbox. It's also a tool for the state, and it gives us at least a snapshot of where the district's at. And while there's things that we are required to address, we're also going to look at the things we think are most important for the students in the district, if that makes sense. So it's what's turned in, and I'm looking at this thinking about the Dark Ages when I started teaching, and how, you know, we just had to reach certain levels and you could do them all by hand. We could not do this without the complexity of computers. I mean, when you start getting ANDors and multiple pathways and tracks, it really takes a while to adjust to it and for, so for example, I mean, just by one thing, some of our career pathways are just getting to the point where we're having capstone classes, and students can complete that. So I think in the end, it's a good tool for us to improve what we do for our students, but it's also just one tool and one measurement device. It's like, I could say, you know, you go to the doctor and somebody gets on the scale. It doesn't, that one measure doesn't tell you anything about the person. You know, they could be, you know, six foot eight and weigh 200 pounds, and they're underweight. They could be four foot 11 and weigh 150 pounds and be way overweight. So you have to look at multiple factors.
And just to give a couple of quick examples of differentiated assistance, last year, for example, we qualified for differentiated assistance for our foster youth in the area of graduation rate and college and career readiness index. And so we really did some focus in that area, and we talked at the board last spring, I think it was, about some of those things that we put in place and work that the guidance coordinators were doing. And those two indicators for our foster youth went from red up through orange and up to yellow. So we had, you know, grew two colors, I guess. And so we were really excited about that. Unfortunately, they slipped in chronic absenteeism and suspension rate, so now we're going to have to go back and look at it a little differently. In addition, students with disabilities, they had five Reds out of six areas last year. And so, you know, a lot of things went in place with inclusion and working with our students with disabilities, and now they have zero Reds, and we've sort of graduated from differentiated assistance and no longer qualify for that with our students with disabilities. So that process has really been helpful for us, and it gives us some tools to look at, you know, the root cause and what we can put in place. It gives us a kind of a county community of people who are doing the same kinds of things. So we look forward to that process again this year. As a matter of fact, on Wednesday, we have our first root cause analysis day, where we'll really be taking a deep dive into chronic absenteeism. So look forward to that.
I also have another question, where we have the none in the center there, which is under African-American, American Indian, Asian, and Filipino. Why is there no scoring in that? Do they not, is the number so low that it doesn't...
Yes, and the reason it's low in those two, you'll see it's primarily in graduation rate and college and career readiness rate, so it's only high school that measure that, whereas like suspension rate, where they do have colors, is K-12. So there's enough when you add in those additional grade levels, but in, with those, like say, American Indian or Alaska Native have several none areas, it's because they just didn't have enough students that were part of the measurement.
Okay.
And when you look, if you were to look at the, if you were to go on the dashboard, you can also look at individual schools, and you'll see a lot of no colors in individual schools, where they have just too few students in those groups.
I have looked at that. How do you look at this and determine what is going to be the, for the next year? How do we determine? How do we determine what our goals are going to be? Are we looking at groups? Or are we looking at what the state is? Or are we looking at other, as the light said, we're looking at other things the state doesn't look at too? To combine all this, to put our more efforts towards?
The short answer is yes. I mean, we look at all the different factors. We always have a goal to improve academic achievement. You know, we always have a goal to improve our graduation rate, our college and career readiness. And then we just look at the areas of greatest need. And one of the areas that we really saw is, you know, chronic absenteeism and suspension rate this year seem to be the areas of great need. And then for particular populations, there are areas of need. So we look at those things. We think about, you know, there's two different styles of initiatives or interventions or things we put in place. One is system-wide types of initiatives that we look at that really we hope to raise the achievement of all of our students across the board. And then there's, you know, more targeted interventions. For example, things we put in place for our foster youth last year that really targeted those particular students to provide them some support that they didn't have before. So we try to strike a good balance of things that are across the board, systemic things that'll have long-term achievement, and also sort of more targeted things to address particular problem areas.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, a quick question. For the students, I know Roberta Pace is focusing on the dual enrollment between the colleges and the campuses. So it sounds like there's going to be an opportunity. Some of these students are going to have an AA by the time they graduate a high school.
Well, not in our district. The REACHES program is the most comprehensive dual enrollment program we have. But they get a year of college out of the way before they graduate. They don't graduate with an AA. That would be like a middle college program instead of an early college program.
Okay, so we're not going to be doing that?
No.
Okay. So I was wondering how that would impact the reporting. So even the one year is still going to have a positive impact?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we need to encourage our students to take that opportunity if they can?
Yeah, there's research that shows even a student that passes one semester of a college course during high school is way more likely to persist, to get to college and to persist in college and get a degree.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. You're not surprised? Looking under celebrations, I was startled by seeing white student groups. Normally, I don't consider that involved in a celebration. But what I realize you mean is just breaking out white as an ethnicity? Okay. So presumably, on the dashboard, it adds up to 100% someplace in all of the ethnicities.
Actually, it could be a little more because you have individual ethnicities and you have two or more races as well. So it's going to be a little bit off, but essentially, yes.
Where do you fit in Asian Indians? Seeing as we have a Gujarati, our Sikh population here, do you call those Asian?
That's a good question. I'd have to go back and.
Because it's a, oh, okay, it's really a subcontinent. Okay. So then these will also overlap into two Venn diagrams of people who are also, so it doesn't come out all the neat numbers. Aside from ethnicity, do you have an idea of how many students we're talking about? Or should we just say at-risk? Do you consider these at-risk students, the ones that are in anything but the green or blue categories?
Well, certainly. I mean, for each student group, there are different numbers, right? So we have about 30% of our population are English learners. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of around 100 foster youth, 100 homeless youth. Socioeconomically disadvantaged, that's about 78% of our students. 73% of our students, thank you Paula, students with disability, that's somewhere around 14% of our population. So every group is a little bit different in terms of the numbers.
And these are all, so many of them are duplicates.
Yeah, a student could certainly be Latino. A student could be English learner. It could be, you know, any number of those different categories.
Aside from all students, how many students do you think we're looking at on this chart?
All of them. Well, I mean, the first category is all students.
Aside from all students.
Aside from all students, probably all of them would fit into one of those other categories as well. So it's probably all students and all students, and then all students in the rest of them.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I had a question too. How do we know? I know this is new and it's so confusing for people who don't see this every day. Like you, not every day, but it's, you know, and it is new, so I know it's confusing. But I know that, I Googled right now and it's, I know that the red is the lowest performance and the blue is the highest performance. So when do we know when borderline is? When they're like orange and yellow or?
Like how close are they?
Yeah, like tiny bit.
They actually publish the numbers. So for each area, the calculation is a little bit different. Like graduation has, you know, this percent to this percent to this percent to this percent. And if you grow this number to this number, like, you can research and see exactly what it takes to move from color to color to color. So it's just, it takes looking at the data file to see what those numbers are.
So it's a little bit more quantitative too, to see numbers and things like that?
Yeah.
So a lot of these data, like when it comes to college and career, literally, Miss Pace will go through individual transcripts and figure out where students are and what they need. At the school site and elementary level, the principal, the teachers will sit down, that's part of what happens during collaboration, and look at students and where their scores are and in what ways that can inform instruction. So the closer you get to each school and individual classrooms, the more granular the data is going to be. And it's going to be talking about individual students. These are gross data for the whole district. And I wanted to add that the categories are defined by the state in terms of their plan that they have to submit to the federal government. So, you know, how it's defined, I think those, some of them come out of census categories, but also some of them, like students with disabilities are specifically defined by students with, who have an IEP, who could be a very high-performing student, kind of answering your question about whether they're at risk or not. So a student could be part of any subgroup. A student technically could have a chronic absence issue and be an outstanding student. That's not generally correlated, but it's possible.
And the colors are really designed by the state to give credit to schools that are making improvements. Meaning, like you could be this percent, which is low. And so then you would just be low. But then they add in that how much you changed from last year. So you could be like, just based on where you're at, you might be an orange. But the fact that you made really good growth from the year before, that might bump you up into the yellow. And so it was designed because a system like we had before that was just based on an achievement marker, it really shook out along socioeconomic lines. The higher socioeconomic schools and districts did higher and the lower ones did lower. And this was designed to try and give credit to schools that are making positive changes and making positive growth. So the colors are really trying to balance that out and show that, you know, maybe good things are happening.
Throughout districts, yeah. My final question was for, to qualify, I understand we have to qualify for the differential assistance. Is it because of one year we were red and the next year we're blue? Or vice versa, we're blue and then we're red? Is that how we qualify?
Differentiated assistance is from, is individual years. So we qualify this year based on those reds. And then next year, the new dashboard will come out and we may qualify for different ones or not qualify for any. Like every single year, it changes based on the color of that year.
And it's consecutive?
Yes. So last year, like I said, last year, we qualified for students with disabilities because we had multiple reds. This year, we don't have any reds, so we don't qualify for students with disabilities.
Thank you.
And if you start understanding it, they'll change it.
Or even if you don't, they'll change it.
Even if you don't. I mean, it's pretty typical that even the factors that go into each category may change. For example, when Mr. Dubrasky was pointing out the ANDors and all the combinations on college and career. And I think to the state and state board side, they're doing it to really refine the process. But it's very hard for practitioners to kind of deal with some of those changes year over year.
Would you describe the process of preparing for and filing the information that leads to the changes? Because this looks like it could be hideous.
Sorry, say that again, because I'm not sure. Okay. I apologize.
It's all pulled out. It's all pulled out of CalPads. We don't file different, CalPads is the data system. So that includes the student's test scores, the student's chronic absence or attendance. All the factors that go into here are not data that we're necessarily entering. They're not pre-entered, but they're entered as they, on a dynamic basis through the year through CalPads. Where it's important for us is to look at those data in order to make a change. So our worry isn't, our first worry is making sure CalPads are accurate. And by the way, sometimes that's what happens in a root cause analysis, is that your identification of homeless or foster youth in particular may not be an accurate number. And they're problematic in discerning. I mean, it's not always easy, the definition of a homeless person or somebody identifies. So it's in the data refinement, but the actual data are entered. And that goes through our IT department. And Mr. Lewis looks at every data field. No, not hardly, with 19,000 students. And I don't even know how many data fields that would be. I think that's what you meant, is how it's updated.
Yeah, so it sounds like it is so fluid that at any time, you could ask for a report that would give you what is reflected here.
Everything reflected here is available on the state's webpage. And so if. Oh, I'm sorry.
What I meant was your preparation time for the human hours that it takes to produce this. Is this something that you gear up for? It's going to take the whole month of March to do this? Or is it an ongoing process that it sounds like?
The state creates it, actually. We, to prepare this, I just go in and print it out.
So there's no cost to us essentially in preparing this?
No, we take the tests, our students take the tests and they're recorded. And, you know, we enter in our students' graduation rates and our student suspensions into our student information system like on a day-to-day basis. Yeah. And then the state takes that data. And then every December, they publish all of this information in the dashboard for every school across the state.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel better.
Okay, now, here's my question. Have we ever been able to check an area or whatever to see if the state actually is scoring us correctly? Or if we're on the wrong pathway to what the state's wanting from us?
Yeah, there's, there are what's called CalPads submission windows. And so that's the information system that houses all of this stuff and the data that comes from all the districts to the state. And so our technology department, they let us know when the submission window is coming up. And then there's time to review that data that's being submitted. And so we take a look at that data. By the time it comes out here, it's too late for us to really make any changes. But as the data is uploaded to the state, we are able to look at it, go through it, make sure it's all accurate before the state gets it.
Okay. And then this is how they base what money they give us? By looking at this dashboard necessarily or not?
No, the money we get is based on the number of students that are either, you know, foster, English learners, socioeconomically disadvantaged. There is a small amount of money that comes with differentiated assistance. I think it was 50 grand. Wasn't, it was, I mean, that's a big amount of money for a pocketbook. But in terms of like district-wide services, it's just enough to kind of spend some time really looking for something to put in place to improve students.
All right, thank you.
These are used for like report cards too, kind of? Like a district's report card, per se?
This would sort of be considered our district's report card, yeah.
That's how I understood it, or tried to.
That makes sense.
Okay. Well, we thank you so much for the report and all the answered questions. And we'll move on to review approval of 2019, 2020 First Interim Financial Report, Mrs. Ford.
Riverside County Office of Education has approved the positive certification of the district's first interim financial report and notified the California Department of Education. However, as noted in the report, the district is deficit spending and experiencing a decline in enrollment, which will require adjustments to the district's budget. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into the governor's proposal.
Mrs. Ford, at the end of the letter that they, in the report that they're giving us, they make a couple of comments. And I know a lot of the comments are in general to districts. But they stated that that we should remain prudent in, when considering how to best maintain and deliver quality education programs. Are they, is that just a general statement? Or are they criticizing some of the places we are spending money?
No, it's a general statement in that every district in the state is facing, now that we're going into a COLA-only environment, you know, all we're receiving is the small COLA. And we're not receiving those big gap. You know, we were getting that gap funding, which was large, I mean, millions of dollars worth of funding in addition to the COLA. Now that we're not receiving that, every state is feeling the cost pressures of the STIRS and the PERS, the special education, increased costs. And because of that, we are in a situation where we have to really look at all of our programs. And so that's what they're saying, is just be, your deficit spending, you will need to review your budget. You'll need to identify those areas where, you know, you may need to adjust programs.
Have we thought about next year? Because we're doing this a year, okay. So where we might be looking at if we had to cut costs? Do we have anything in mind? Or any area that we would cut back on?
We always have a few areas that we can look at. We are talking about that now. And we'll be looking at that because we are working on our second interim report. That cutoff is January 31st, so we just cut off for that. And we'll be reviewing those numbers and see where we are now that it's mid-year. And then we'll be having that discussion.
That's got to be a hard decision to think about.
I will make a comment that kind of ends this topic and moves into the next. So I, as I think some of you know, I sit on the thick map board, which monitors the fiscal health of districts across the state and intervenes when districts are in trouble. And the comment was made by Mike Fine, who's the executive director, that about a third of the districts in the state are one decision away from insolvency. And I also sit on a superintendent's group. And basically, you've got a number of factors in the state that affect most of the districts. I think it's two-thirds of the districts are in declining enrollment. The state is declining by 4% a year. PERS and STIRS are going up annually. As Mrs. Ford said, we're in a COLA-only environment, which means there's no new money. We have been told to spend money on increased services and students and increase that over the years. There is no money to increase that. Special ed costs, I know I'm taking part of yours. But I want to kind of lay the groundwork that what you're going to hear from Mrs. Ford is happening across the state. And that statement can and should be made about every single district in the state. The only districts where there may be an exception is there are a handful of districts in very, very high assessed valuation areas where they get $20,000 to $30,000 a student. We're at about $11,000.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm not criticizing and I'm not trying to get, I know that, I know we've, you know, we know what you're looking at. But I just want other people to understand that this is not an easy job to do. And in this situation, I don't want to sit in your spot. I'm glad you're handling it, not me, is what I mean.
I might add, and you may all know this, but I almost daily have my dashboard. And that's I go into Mrs. Ford's office. that's I go into Mrs. Ford's office and look at whether she's standing, sitting, crying, or smiling, and what she says to me, but we literally monitor the budget on a daily basis, and we're always looking. I mean, there's always a Plan B, there's always a Plan C, and, you know, we've had experience going through some pretty tough times, and we don't like them, but that's why we have great people like Mrs. Ford. And I might say, it's a team, and I was going to say, it's not only the business division, which is great, but really, everybody comes together to do what we need to do, so.
Thank you. And with that, we go to Item C, 2020-21 Governor's Budget Proposal, Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. We'll get the presentation up here. So tonight, as you know, the governor released his 2020-21 budget proposal on January 10th, and this evening, I'll review some highlights from that proposal and how the proposal will impact Haruba. So I don't know if you had a chance to watch Governor Newsom, his budget presentations are always much longer than Governor Brown's were, so some people don't stay for the whole presentation, they don't watch the whole thing. But while he acknowledged, you know, that nationally, that the national and the California economy remains strong, Governor Newsom emphasized that there is a slowing global growth, and that projected, he's projecting slowing in the state revenue growth over the next four years. So we're still anticipating that we're going to see growth, but it's just going to be a slower growth than what we've experienced in the past few years. UCLA's economic outlook revised their growth projections to actually a little bit better, 3% in 2019, 2% in 2020, and 2% in 2021. So the governor's 2020-21 K-12 budget proposal presents an increase, or actually represents, excuse me, an increase of $3 billion over the 2019-20, which sounds wonderful. However, only 1.2 billion of that $3 billion will go towards LCFF, which is, of course, 85% of our funding that we receive. So the, he does address special education of $645 million that he's anticipating to put to a new funding model, which we don't know what this will look like yet, but it's a new special education formula that will be based on a district's three-year rolling average daily attendance, and that will still be funded through SLPAs, and so the funding will go to SLPAs, and then it will be distributed to us. In line with the governor's priority for universal preschool, he has, in his proposal, has a one-time funding of $250 million. To us, this is concerning because it's one-time, and he is putting stipulation on that, that it needs to be improved and increased services. And we all know if you improve and increase services one time in special education, you create a maintenance of effort factor, which basically means that we have to stay at that same level and continue to provide funding at that level for that program. But if we do that with one-time money, we won't have that the following year, it'll have to come from somewhere else. So that is a proposal that we'll be watching closely. Another of the governor's one-time funding proposals is centered around the teacher shortage. He is proposing $900 million of Prop 98 funds for educator workforce programs, professional development, recruitment and retention, and expansion of the classified employees credentialing program. And again, that's one-time funding. Looking at the LCFF formula itself, as mentioned, you know, the governor's proposing $1.2 billion to fund a 2.29% COLA on the LCFF. This is lower than the 3% COLA that was for the 2020-20, that was proposed for the 2020-21 budget, and, but it's higher than the 1.79 COLA that the Legislative Analyst Office identified in November. So there's no COLA proposed for the targeted instructional improvement grant or for transportation. Given that we are in a declining enrollment situation, if the 2.29 COLA is adopted by the state in July, we will see flat year-over-year LCFF funding, and I'll show you that in just a second. So the LCFF COLA of 2.29 is applied to each grade span of the base grants. This chart shows each base grant amount for the current year, and then what the base grant will be in 2021, adjusted with that 2.29% COLA. If we look at, if we take that and we look at the last slide, provided the per-student base funding amount, this slide provides the average student amount, which includes our supplemental concentration funds that we receive for students who are low-income, or an English learner, or foster youth. The top table is the district's 2020-21 projected per-student ADA, projected ADA, or projected per-student ADA funding, our projected ADA, as well as our total revenue from LCFF. And then if you look at 2019-20, you'll see that's our current per-ADA funding, our budgeted ADA, which will finalize at P2, that happens in like mid-April, and then our budgeted 2019-20 LCFF total revenue. So you can see, we're relatively flat. So with the 2.29% COLA, we, you know, this means that, as we mentioned, we're going to have some work to do, and we're already looking at appropriate staffing levels and making necessary adjustments that are based on our projected enrollment. Our decline in enrollment is, as Mr. Duchan mentioned, the state overall is declining, and they anticipate that enrollment will continue to decline through '27, '28, at a 0.4% each year, and then we actually had a decline of 1.3% this year. So it was a significant decline. If you look at just what it costs for us to, year-over-year, continue our daily operations, the STIRS and PERS increase will be $2.5 million cost to us, and $1.7 million for step and column. And that's just the movement of our classified staff, our management staff, and our certificated staff over on the salary schedule. So special education contributions, as we mentioned, continue to escalate, and then we also are facing, with the recent fires that have happened, we're facing property and liability insurance costs that continue to rise. So what's not in the governor's budget proposal? There's no increase to the LCFF targets. That was something that was proposed by the legislature but didn't pass, and there's no additional payments for STIRS and PERS, which we did see last year, but not this year, and no one-time discretionary funding. The one-time monies that are being proposed are, have ties to them. So there's something that we would have to do with that funding, so it's more like categorical. So from here, the legislature, you know, have already started meeting, they'll meet through May, and then the May revise will come out. At that point, you know, we'll have to build our budget based on the May revision, and then in June, we bring the LCAP and our budget to the board, and then in July, we actually see the final state adopted budget. So this is kind of the process, and really, January begins our whole process of budgeting for the school district. So that's what we're looking at with the governor's budget proposal.
I have a question. The page number, I'm not sure it is. What's in the governor's K-12 budget proposal? You have that one-time funding of $250 million to the school districts. What is that, I mean, do you even have an estimate what that's going to break down per district or per school?
At this point, we don't. We don't know what they'll base it on. We don't know if it's going to be based on our current preschool students, they're three, four, and five-year-olds, or if it's going to be based on, you know, we don't know at this point.
So, well, most of these, the dollars that they're budgeting, are they going to reformulate to what districts they'll go to, or what, you know, the needs are? So is it, are we starting all from scratch?
Well, yeah, so the $250 million, we did receive some funding this year, and we ended up receiving about $700,000, about $700,000 for a preschool program, which helped us to offset what contribution we have to make to that preschool program. And this is all special education preschool, not regular, you know, preschool. So, but we, again, we don't know exactly what that will equate to with this $250 million. If we look at just the numbers of how much they provided last year in total across the state, and what we received, it would be about half that amount that we would receive this year.
Is that, and so you're going to have to use the general fund to cover the rest?
Correct.
Because those are things that we cannot do away with, right? Don't we need to keep them?
Well, again, last year, there were no ties to that funding. So that $700,000 that we received, we were able to use that to offset costs that we're already contributing from the general fund.
Okay.
But if the governor ties increased and improved services to the $250 million, we'll have to, we'll have to increase our services. So we'll be paying for additional programs, or whatever, whatever it is, slots, or whatever it might be, we'll be paying that additional funding, and we won't actually see any relief to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
I'm feeling pretty dense tonight, so could we go back to the page? What does the LCFF 2.29% mean? And help me understand, because I'm not getting the math right, the difference between the $11,000 and the $18,000? What accounts for the difference in the years, in those figures?
Okay, so the, at the top, the 2020-21, that $11,264.92 is a per-student amount that we receive, and we're basing that on an average daily attendance rate of 18,258.27 students. That's how many students would be there each day. See in dollars? Yeah, no, that's the actual, that's our actually average daily attendance each day. No, that's okay, it's confusing, there's a lot of numbers up there.
But I do want to highlight the third column, because when you multiply those numbers, it ends up being a whopping $63,000 difference, I think.
It's almost 64.
Oh, 64, I'm sorry.
Just shy of 64.
I tend to underestimate numbers.
We, you know, we, like I said, we have our challenges that we'll be facing, but we're, I can say I have friends that are in the same situation in other districts. We're all, we're all in this situation. It's, you know, like I said, the cost of operating, just our STIRS and PERS cost, our step and column, those are operating costs that we have to work with, and when you're in a declining enrollment situation, there just isn't a way to be able to balance those things out. You know, you have to find options for what you can do to make it work.
So I have a question, Mrs. Ford. So I just want to, I thought the same thing as Ms. Bradford too, I couldn't figure that out at first.
I'll make sure I put students there next time.
That's okay, that's okay. But I just wanted a quick question, just to clarify. So the LCAP, LCFF, the gap, all that's fully funded?
Correct.
So now we just get increases, the COLA increase?
Correct.
No longer getting that gap?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that clearly. So going forward, there's no more gap funding for that? But we're still get the supplemental and all those things?
We do, yes. So if, as our, as the base funding goes up, you know, we still get a little bit more of that supplemental funding, and we would see increases in revenue with the 2.29% COLA if we weren't in a situation where we're declining in enrollment. So it's really the decline in the enrollment that is causing us to be in a situation where we're not seeing an increase in the revenue.
Yeah. And when you mentioned the governor was going to establish new targets based on the legislature, does that mean that the base grant would go up if they had authorized that?
Yes.
If the governor had authorized that?
Yes, then it would have been as similar to what we did when LCFF was first implemented in 2013-14, and each year, there was supposed to be a 12% increase in the funding to be able to get to 100% funding in seven years. Of course, that, Governor Brown, because we did get into good economic times, and we had more state revenues coming in, Governor Brown was able to sometimes give us, I think one year, we got like a 45% of that gap funding. And so we were in that situation where we were just getting, you know, quite a bit of funding each year, and we're just not in that situation anymore.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford.
I had a question for, I don't know what slide it is, but major factors contributing district challenges, the last one, property and liability insurance costs continue to rise. Is that also, I know we had the recent fires, is that also including like our shutdown of the schools kind of a thing, or?
Yes and no. The shutting down of the schools actually impacted our average daily attendance, but we were able to apply for a waiver from the state to be able to basically recapture that, and it kind of holds us harmless. So we were able to, you know, to compensate for that in our funding. What the property and with, when I talk about the fires, it's really the fires overall in the whole state of California, and how those have impacted the cost of getting insurance for property and liability. So that's really what we're seeing is, and there's a couple other areas too, there's some, you know, the new law, the AB 218, which extends the timeline for being able to bring forward like a sexual molestation charge if you were, if you were a child, and you remember when you're 40, you know, or, you know, go through therapy and something, you know, you recall that, there, that's another area that we're anticipating, we're going to see some increased cost and liability.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Yes, thank you so much. And we'll move on to Item D, Announced Location of Employee of the Year Celebration, Mr. Duchan.
Thank you, President Artega. This will be a long and complex presentation. It will be March 19th at Haruba Valley High School with the reception at 5:00, and recognition program at 6:00. This will be a new thing for us to do, we're really looking forward to providing a separate new celebration.
Great, thank you. And Item E, Other Administrative Reports and Run Communication?
There are none.
Thank you. If you can all refresh your screens, please. And before we approve the routine action items, I'd like to call on Mr. Dubrovsky.
Yes, we'd like to pull Item Number 22. The report cards were missing certain information that came from our provider DTS, so thanks to Trustee Regal for catching that, and we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
Thank you. So we will be approving Routine Items Action A 1 through 21 and 23 to 32.
So moved?
First by Trustee Garcia, second by Trustee Regal. First by Trustee Garcia, second by Trustee Regal. Call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Item 32B, Award E, Ray Category 1 Internet Service Provider, Mrs. Ford.
In November, the district solicited applications for an internet service provider. RCOE and Charter Communications submitted proposals. RCOE's proposal was the lowest cost at $48,000 per year and provides the option to upgrade the district's broadband connection at no additional cost. These services are E-Rate eligible, allowing the federal E-Rate program to fund approximately 90% of the cost. And then the unrestricted general fund will fund the remaining 10%. Administration recommends the Board award a contract to provide internet connectivity for the 2019-20 fiscal year to RCOE in the amount of $48,000.
So moved.
Second.
First by Trustee Bradford and second by Trustee Garcia.
I have a question.
Can I back up? That's actually 2021. I apologize for that. That was an error.
Oh, year 2021?
Yes.
Okay, that was sort of my question.
For the upcoming year.
Now, do we have to renew this every year? Is it kind of like starting a new contract or they don't do extended contracts to reevaluate the pricing? Or just kind of give you a set price for multiple years?
So, we can, and we have done this in the past, we can do extended. But this is the first year with RCOE actually being part of the E-Rate program. So, we're doing the one year, but we'll have the option to be able to extend.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to comment, great job on this. I know, I wish I could get our RCOE serviced at my house because of the substantial savings. Great job on the team there and thank you for that.
Any further comments? We'll move. For the vote. Okay, so passes 5-0 without check marks, but we'll pretend there's check marks there. There you go, 5-0, thank you. Item C, Adopt Resolution Number 2020/22, Resolution to Honor the Life of Activist Dolores Huerta on April 10th. Mr. Duchon.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Echols for bringing this to our attention and this resolution. I think it's a very important one. On July 18th, 2018, Governor Brown signed into law AB 2644, Designating April 10th as the Dolores Huerta Day. Dolores Huerta was a schoolteacher, and I think that's very important to note, and community activist who played a major role in the American Civil Rights Movement. The Huerta's famed lobbying efforts were crucial in securing aid for families with dependent children and disability insurance for farmworkers in the state of California. Many people are too young to remember those days, but they were, farmworkers endured very harsh conditions. I know a number of people my age and maybe a little bit younger either worked in the fields or had parents who worked in the fields and it was really brutal. And those were critical times and Miss Huerta played a critical role. So, it is administration's recommendation to pass this resolution honoring her and April 10th as Dolores Huerta Day.
Move to approve. Second.
First by Trustee Regal, second by Trustee Bradford. Questions or comments?
I'm delighted to see our district taking this action.
Call for the vote. Passes unanimously, 5-0, thank you. Item D, Adopt Resolution Number 2020/23, California Schools and Local Communities Funding Act of 2018. Mr. Duchon.
Well, again, I want to thank Ms. Echols. A number of months ago, we passed a resolution basically saying we would support any resolution, any legislation that would bring new funds to the school. At that time, there were a number of competing propositions. This has boiled down to one being supported by the education community. The School and Communities Funding Act is, and this is where I have both information and kind of a plea. It is, takes a change at the original Prop 13, and I said that for a reason, to deal with what's called the Split-Roll Property Tax. Under Prop 13, commercial property, which is owned by a larger company, does not get reassessed when that company is sold, unlike your house, which gets reassessed every time it gets sold. This would, I believe it applies to properties over $3 million. So, that if, I remember way, way back after Prop 13 passed, there was a company in Riverside called Alcan. They sold all their property. The property was not reassessed and the company was essentially bought, not for their products, but for the property. It really makes a major change that's critical for Proposition 13. Now, that being said, in the unlimited wisdom of the state, they did not retire that jersey. And Prop 13 is also on the ballot as a School Facilities Act, which I can say, I think, I hope we all, gets passed. So, it will, my plea is, as educators and members of the community, it will be very important to tell our constituencies, our voters, the difference between the two. The new Prop 13 is good. The old Prop 13 is ready for a change. So, this resolution applies to changes in the old Prop 13. So, administration recommends that you pass this resolution along with my little ask that we do our best to see that it gets passed and that the new, that the resolution gets passed, the legislation gets passed, and Proposition 13 of 1978 gets changed and that Proposition 13 on your 2020 ballot gets passed. And if you weren't confused, I could work more at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
First by Trustee Garcia, second by Trustee, Mr. Char.
I have a comment.
Oh, yes, comment or questions?
This is, I mean, this is on the November ballot. And it's, I've supported this in one form or another for the past six years, at least 2014. And even with the smartest people and people that know, they've been confused about it because everybody's always thinking it's residential properties. And I think not until probably this latest form that it, that people are starting to understand. But there's a lot of negative, a lot of misinformation out there, especially on social media. So, we have to make sure we talk to people. And California School Board Association is endorsing this measure. And so, we're looking at supporting that fully. And I ask my colleagues on the board to do the same. So, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Now, as you said that this has been clarified that, and people are being, are confused as it's residents, because I am seeing, I'm actually taking a little social media break because people are so misconstrued on the message. And it clearly states that this is property for, or, commercial property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or business property?
Commercial property that's owned by a larger business.
Okay.
So, it would not apply, let's say, I'm trying to think of a business in town that's located in a house. The business gets sold and the value of the property is less than $3 million. It would not apply. It would apply to, I'm not sure there are any big examples in our town. Maybe some of the larger warehouse spaces. If they got sold, would now, the value of the property would get reassessed.
And now, as a district and with us trying to go out and campaign our bond, is there any messaging that we're going to include for this proposition and tag along with our campaign? Are we just signing this resolution and then what's going to happen after that? Are we, I mean, is there any going to be an advocate for it in the district?
Yeah, there's a couple of answers. First of all, by law, you really cannot tie two propositions together so that any of our advocacy for our bond has to be done by the bond committee and paid for by the bond committee. And it's on the March ballot. This proposition is on the November ballot. It will be supported heavily by all of the education associations, including management, labor, and a number of others that are looking at the, really the tax implications for the state. Because, I mean, there's a lot of money in the commercial property. Obviously, there'll be opponents to it. So, the short answer is no, they're two separate propositions on two ballots. As, you know, an elected member of the community, I think it's important to divide, you know, split between the two, but also, you know, it's up to you, but campaign for both, hopefully. That's about as much as I can say without getting in trouble. Dr. Hanson's going to report back to the bond committee what I said.
And I think I understand what you're asking as well, that the Prop 13 that's on the March ballot is for the school facilities, the state school facilities bond, right? So, we just need to make sure that we're clarifying that, that the March 3, Proposition 13 on the ballot, we want to vote for that, that's a school facilities bond. This is until November and people are still getting confused, even though it's on a separate ballot later in the year. So, we just have to be clear that when we talk to people and they ask about Prop 13 on the March ballot, you know, the answer is yes, we want to support that. That's money coming in to, to support our school facilities. So, that's where we have to make the clarification. We won't be doing any mailing and clarifying that through, but it's our responsibility as we communicate with the community and people that are wanting to know more that the one that's on in March is for school facilities, is completely separate. We want to support that so that we can access state dollars.
The one in March, that is a bond issue that is not going to appear on the November ballot. It's, you have to vote on it now to get it on there. And then the one in November will be listed as Prop 13. And this is, it won't be listed, what will be listed?
March is Prop 13, it's one and done. So, after voting in March, Prop 13 either passes or fails. And it's a majority vote, unlike our local bond, which is Measure E and that requires 55%. So, and the other part of the message, I think, that is important, and maybe this gets to what you were asking also, Trustee Regal, is that our, the fortunes of our bond money also are tied to Prop 13 in that we qualify for state money and in order to get it, we need the local bond money to match it. So, November is, I mean, really, I think the best way is to keep November out of our mind, but also out of the mind of voters, because there already are editorials that are kind of confusing it, conflating the two issues. And I know the Press Enterprise had an op-ed piece against Prop 13 on the March ballot already.
What I was asking, it didn't come out the right way.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do we know what Prop 13 will be in November? We don't know, so it's not going, that Prop 13 issue that they're talking about is not going to be necessarily the Prop 13 on the...
Oh, okay, right. First of all, it still needs to qualify for the ballot. Once it qualifies for the state ballot, the Secretary of State will assign a ballot number to it. And we know it won't be 13 because it'll be a number larger than 13 because I don't know how often they change the sequence, but...
So, it's going to appear then on the March one?
No.
Oh, it's still going to appear then? Okay.
March is only the state school facilities bond that is Prop 13. And our Measure E, which is local, on the November ballot, should disqualify, and we're pretty sure it will, it'll be Proposition some number and it won't be 13.
So, we want to tell everybody, you want to vote for the two school bond issues on the March one?
There you go.
We'll move for the vote. Refresh. Probably refresh your screens. Passes unanimously, 5-0, thank you. And we'll end tonight with Board Member Committee reports. And we'll start with Trustee Bradford.
I've said everything.
Thank you.
Thank you anyway.
Trustee Char.
I don't have any committee reports to report on, but I will have a DAC meeting, which is one of my committees. I take that back, I do have one. I'm on the charitable foundation, Purpose Foundation. And when we had our last meeting, last board meeting, I questioned how much we had made by signing up for, on Amazon, to have your, a percentage of your money spent go to our donation, our, at Haruba Unified. And I did look it up and my contribution had been $140. But I don't know if that was what had just gone from everybody in our district. I think it said your contribution had been $140 over two or three years. So, it does count a little bit. And if you spend a lot of money at Amazon, which a lot of people are doing, it's a good general way to donate to the school district and it's tax deductible, too. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Char, for reminding me of that Amazon. I need to do that myself. One thing I just want to mention, a few things. I want to thank the VFW. I noticed they had donated, I think, $450 to Mr. Leach's auto shop class over in Haruba Valley High School. And so, the VFW has really been involved in making sure that they support our students and our schools. And I want to thank Colin for coming out today from Assemblymember Sabrina Cervantes's office. And I want to encourage the board and everyone to continue to work with folks like Colin. And a couple of meetings ago, I think, Trustee Bradford had mentioned how important it is that we, it had to do with CSBA luncheon that we attended where Assemblymember Jose Medina was the speaker. And Trustee Bradford mentioned that it's important that we work with our local and state, federal officials. A good example, I think, is the School and Communities and other measures to increase funding for education, where Jose Medina had mentioned at that meeting that, you know, we're at the ground level... that, you know, we need to, we're at the ground level here, and we need to talk to our representatives, because they always are not aware, because they've got, you know, they're pretty busy, they've got a lot of things going on, legislation, and, uh, he was a teacher himself and also a school board member here in Harupa, so he really understands the challenges, so when it comes to debating on the floor there, he can really represent, uh, school districts. So I mention that because we have an assembly member who's very involved here in the district, also a state senator and a congressman, that we, we should reach out more often and, and make appointments with them, because sometimes when it comes to a bill that's going to be signed, it's already done, you know, it's already like, it's gone through these committees, and we can engage them sooner and really focus their efforts on, uh, on education and how important it is. Uh, because they, unfortunately, through no fault of their own, they don't always understand those challenges, so. And one last thing I want to say about the school and communities, uh, measure is that it's really about fairness, so when you talk to folks, uh, it's about fairness. You know, we, as homeowners, we have to abide by these rules, and, uh, these commercial businesses don't. And so, so it's really, comes down to fairness, so when you talk to folks out there, and they'll be calling, you know, they'll be calling you, uh, uh, when you're at dinner, so have some talking points ready and, and then take them to task. They're calling you and bug, bugging you, so let's, uh, you know, make it worth your while and make it worth our while in education. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I haven't had any committee meetings as of yet, uh, just a couple of things. Cassie Rivera couldn't make it, uh, she's going to be our new student board member. Um, hopefully she can make it this month, or next month, no, the next meeting, eighteenth. But Karen, um, Trustee Bradford, I really want to thank you for bringing that to the table and recommending that we have somebody from Nueva High School attend our board meetings, but look forward to meeting our new student board member. And Colin, yes, thank you for coming out, and look forward to working with you, and welcome to Sabrina's team. I think that's about all I have for this week.
Thank you. And I had, um, just quick invitation, we'll be hosting the Cabe Riverside Chapter, um, also I serve president there, and we'll be hosting Harupa Unified School District here in our parent center, um, February twenty, twentieth at six P.M. And, um, there's going to be great food and, you know, just, um, seeing what updates to, and, and legislative, um, updates are also, um, said for, for bilingual and multilingual education, so you're all invited, and it's here at home, so that's exciting. Yeah, of course, um, I'll send that as an email or text. Um, also wanted to thank Mrs. Echols for your leadership. Um, I think it's really important, the resolutions that we unanimously passed, um, it's important to also recognize women of color in, in, um, in, in leadership. Um, funny thing, the interesting, um, thing that I, I learned about, um, Mrs. Huerta, was that she actually coined the si se puede. A lot of people think that Cesar Chavez did, but it was actually her. But at that time, women weren't, you know, given the value that they, that they deserve, so a lot of people think it's Cesar Chavez that said, si se puede, yes, you can, but it was actually her, so, um, thank you, and it's, it's, uh, very nice to, to work in partnership and unity with, with you as a president as well, and on behalf of the board, we thank all of you, um, also cabinet and your team. I think it's really honorable for you to always turn back to, to say, it's not me, it's, it's a teamwork, so I appreciate each and one of you, uh, for the reports. I know it's hard to digest, but, um, and I can only imagine how hard it is to even, you know, make the, these reports and, and make them more palatable for, for us, so I thank you and I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Any final comments, Mr. Duchon?
No, again, I, I want to congratulate the board on passing both resolutions, and, um, I know everybody's working hard on behalf of the school district's bond, I want to thank them, even though we can't campaign here, but it, it is important for people to be knowledgeable about it. Um, and so, thank you to the board, and, as I said to somebody earlier, I don't know why, but happy February.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Yeah?
Um, our next board meeting's on a Tuesday because of the holiday, but that week also our high schools, our FFA, are all going to Indio to show their animals and, um, sell their animals, so if you can make it down there, it's a lot of fun. It's going on for two weeks, and that's the last week, is, um, they start showing on Tuesday, I believe, and, or Wednesday and Friday, I think, is when they show, and then their, um, sale, their auction. Um, and these kids really work hard. They buy the animals themselves, pay for them themselves, and then they sell them to get the money back, so they can have another animal the next semester or then whatever it is, and to make up, so if you can help at all, even just donating to them, if you get a letter from any of them, please help them out a little bit, because they really do work hard. I know my granddaughter's down there all the time at the farm, um, feeding and training, I mean, they'd have to train them to walk, and it's a lot of work, and if you've never had experience in that, uh, it's like training a dog, I mean, some, some of them are more stubborn, especially the pigs and the hogs, are a little more stubborn, but, uh, it's, it's really amazing to see what, how they are so, um, well-versed in what they're doing, and the kids really, really, they're, even though they're shy, they, it really brings something out in them, you know, to get out in front of a hundred or five hundred people and walk their pig around and, and do, make them do what they want them to do, so, uh, if you should get a chance down there, go to the, the Indio Day Festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was a FFA student myself, so I know how exciting and nerve-wracking it is, so thank you for sharing that. And we want to wish you all a, a happy Valentine's Day, um, next week, two weeks, and may you all, above all, share love to our students, and we thank you so much for doing that. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.